Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. The time is 12:02 PM, and we have all members present. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Ms. Long?
Thank you. So this is this afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. It is amended. On your consent, we did review everything on the consent, and the only thing I would note is that you will see the six grants that Mr. Bokey discussed with you yesterday included on your agenda. And that's it, because there are no proclamations, resolutions, or ordinances today.
Schlacken.
So far, so far.
Well, Councilmember Krueger?
Yes. Oh. What? I'm sorry, I was looking at something else.
Good, Councilmember Krueger, do you want to bring up the Roy appointment and what we may be asked to consider this afternoon?
There is a position open on the council of the city of Roy. It has been not filled for quite some time, and I got a call last night that there are some issues that need to be taken care of, and it can only be done with a forum. And the appointment for this position needs to be done today in the sense that he is going in for surgery next Tuesday and not available. They plan on having a, calling a special meeting on Monday in order to take care of the business while they have a quorum. Therefore, there is government-to-government, I want to say, emergency. Is that what you're?
Yes, okay, so I'll be-
He will be available for a Zoom for the interview at the 3 o'clock meeting if the council so decides to allow this.
Thank you, Councilmember Krueger. I will attempt to restate. As folks recall, we started a process after the Roy City Council could not come to a decision about who to appoint for a vacant position in the Roy City Council. The decision comes to the Pierce County Council within a date certain. And that date is August?
Fourth.
August 4th is the deadline for the county council to make appointment to the Roy City Council. If the county council refuses to do so, the decision then goes to the governor and state of Washington. We were on this path, right? We opened it up, we did communication and outreach. We got one and only one application, as I understand it. That individual is qualified
Yes.
to serve. That individual is qualified to serve on the Roy City Council meets all the qualifications. So by our, by our application deadline, we got one and only one qualified applicant. We were prepared to make this appointment in mid-July. That was our process, with all of our timing and all of our process. Councilmember Krueger got a communication that because of a number of extenuating factors, family emergencies, medical leaves, the need for the city of Roy to do business, there's a whole bunch of factors. The request is that the county, the Pierce County Council fast-track its decision to make the appointment. So that's why we were asked to make it today, and if we were to do it today, it would be under under an emergency, because we have not, because we're under, right, we've noticed and are on a track to consider this in mid-July. So it would have to be an emergency based on our rules of procedure, because we would have to bypass our proper, our more normal noticing provisions. Therefore, it would be an emergency resolution. It's not subject to signature by the executive, it's an action by the county legislative authority as a sole decision-maker. So Councilmember Krueger is attempting to get the one qualified applicant to be present for a interview by the council later this afternoon. And then the council can consider an action. So Councilmember Krueger, do you know if the qualified individual is available for an interview today?
Yes, he is.
And via Zoom, Councilmember Krueger? Okay. So the current plan is to amend our agenda, we're going to open this up for discussion here soon. The current proposal is to amend our agenda for this emergency resolution for this purpose. We would do an interview during our 3:00 PM meeting at the conclusion of our business. So under, under other business, we would do an interview of the individual. We could, the council could then choose to go into executive session to consider qualifications, and then come back out into an open public meeting and determine what the council wishes to do. That is the proposal and the amendment to our agenda this afternoon. I'll stop there and see what questions and comments council members have. Vice Chair Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. Just want to drop back a little bit, make sure I got my timeline on some of this correct, because I know this is unusual for us. Initially, the, they had a vacancy at Roy, and the names that were put forward, none of them were adopted because they had like a two-two tie on anyone who was coming forward. And so no decision was made, so it fell to us.
Can you confirm those facts, Ms. Long?
Yeah, they were unable to make the appointment. The city council had 90 days from the date of the resignation to make the appointment, and they failed to do so. And then it, the authority then transferred to the county council, and the council has 90 days to make that appointment.
Okay. And the gentleman who we could potentially be interviewing today, was he one of those candidates that the council couldn't decide on?
Yes. He had applied for the position early on with the city of Roy.
Okay. And I guess just my only kind of optics hiccup would be, and is the person calling us to say, hey, appoint this guy, someone who was voting for that person before, and now they're calling us and saying, hey, you've really got to appoint the guy that I wanted before? Or is it? I understand kind of the optics issue, and I don't know if we know the outcome of those votes, but I think that's perhaps just for us to consider is, you know, are we having someone, oh, hurry up and appoint the guy that I supported before? I just couldn't get the votes for it. And I don't know if that's true.
The mayor, the mayor was, Mayor Ivy was the contact. She's the only person I've talked to, and I believe Councilmember Krueger has had a more recent conversation with her.
Yeah. So was this someone that Mayor Ivy approved of prior to it being sent up to us?
Councilmember Krueger?
Thank you, Chair. This was the only applicant for the position before. Mayor Ivy had put out lots of information requests on the reader board, on Facebook, whatnot. She even drove to JVLM to hand-deliver an application for it, but the person declined to fill it out. So there was just differences of whatever issues there were, and they did not come to a conclusion on the one applicant. Therefore, it came to us. We have the one applicant that is willing to serve, and that is where we are.
But it is someone-
So it wasn't a favoritism by any means. It was the only applicant.
If someone came up to our podium and asked that question, would we? Then we'll have a public hearing on this. So is, is, want to make sure that the sequencing is right, that this was someone?
Yes. It was all sequenced properly, and it, so I, we have one applicant. One before and one now.
All right. We are jumping our sequence of events. We're going to do more-
Correct.
Given one app. So we are jumping public process. Lots of extenuating circumstances. I'm just making sure we have the, lots of extenuating, you have one candidate.
They do not have a legal team, they do not have a clerk.
Right, there's-
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's an emergent need there. There's, you know, one applicant. There's a lot of reasons. But we are bypassing public process in this, but I think we need to be clear why we choose to bypass and what the outcomes would be, plus or minus. So just make sure we have that really well that we can articulate to the public that may show up, because if this is someone who didn't get votes before, people who didn't vote for him before might all show up and say, no, we didn't vote for this person before because of X, Y, and Z. We don't know. It's public comment. Just want to make sure we're prepared and can defend our actions that, in hindsight, could look like we moved quickly, and just make sure we have a good record of it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We do need to be fully prepared to explain why it emergency.
Right.
We, we don't, we don't circumvent public process lightly at all. And so being really clear about why we're doing this under emergency action. Ms. Long, anything to add?
I was just going to add that we did keep the application process open for as long as our notice stated. So our full application process occurred. The deadline was end of business on Friday, and that was still the only, so we're not cutting off the application process, just, but we are shortening the notice process as being an emergency committee.
Do we, before we take this up as an item, have to declare an emergency so we can take it up? Or do we take it up and then say, and under emergency, right? Just want to make sure we sequence that correctly.
Right, no, it could be placed under resolutions on your, on your regular agenda, and it's just the name of it is an emergency resolution, appointing blank to serve. And in the recitals, I've rewritten the order, or the resolution so that the, the emergency, the facts of the emergence are stated therein. There's a declaration as part of the title of emergency. So it's all in the resolution. And in fact, you can, you know, inter, or move the resolution, have it read into the record, discuss, have the interview, and go into executive session, and then come back, have further discussion, and then vote. So if that, that might be the regular sequence for today, if you agree to, to go forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Krueger?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note that one of the members constituent had mentioned that they would have liked to have had more time to find another applicant. And I said, well, by the time this gets to the council and the application process, there should be at least another three or four weeks. And so it wasn't like they didn't have additional time to seek another applicant. So the efforts, I think, were above and beyond that were made. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm hearing agreement to place this resolution on the agenda at our regular meeting. It'll be at the end of our regular meeting, and the anticipated sequence will be to read the resolution into the record, do the interview, go into executive session, come back, and council will, will consider the, the resolution. Any other comments about today's regular meeting agenda? Don't see anything. Q? Item number three is external boards and commissions. Mr. Swanson, to begin the discussion, please.
Thank you, Chair Mello, members of the council. We, starting with the Pierce County Regional Council, there is, the agenda has not been posted for their next meeting yet. We're still a few weeks out from that, but that, that should be the third Thursday, which would be June 20th. We just don't have the agenda posted yet. There are a couple meetings at the Puget Sound Regional Council this week. Starting tomorrow at 10:00 AM is the Economic Development District Board meeting. There are not action items on the agenda, but there are several discussions on there. A representative from Boeing, their, their Director of Government Operations, Susan Champlain, will be doing a presentation on Boeing in Washington. Their Dr. Joseph Williams from the Washington State Department of Commerce will be there to do a presentation on Washington's information and communication technology sector. And then staff from the Puget Sound Regional Council will be providing an update on the industrial lands analysis that's been done over the past couple of years. And those will all be discussion items of the Economic Development District Board. Moving on to Thursday at 10:00 AM, the Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting. Again, they don't have any action items other than the consent agenda on their agenda, but they do have several discussion items with Puget Sound Regional Council staff. They will be discussing the comprehensive plan review work plan and the approach they are taking. Chair? Moving on, there will be a discussion on housing trends for Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander population, and that will also be from the Puget Sound Regional Council staff. And then there are also, the Puget Sound Regional Council staff will be providing an update on their equity tracker that they have put in over the past few years. I would also note for the Growth Management Policy Board, it's not part of their agenda packet, but on their website, they posted a follow-up to last month's meeting. There are some comments that were submitted by the Kitsap Regional Public Health Director that were in relation to the May topic they had regarding racial disparity impact in housing. So those aren't, if you look for the follow-up on that, for the members that serve, the member and the alternate that serve on that, that isn't in your packet. It is on their website as a supplement to last month's meeting that that is on there. And then also, the, the, the General Assembly was the, on May 30th last week, and I know we had members who attend who would give an update on the General Assembly last week. Are there any questions, Mr. Chair?
Questions about Puget Sound Regional Council business? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Do any other members have other boarding commission updates? Councilmember Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Board of Health is meeting tomorrow, and just so everybody is prepared and aware, we are starting with kind of a, a moment to acknowledge the dedication and work of Chair Ushka to the Board of Health, and so, and then probably pause for recess and then move on to business. And then the only business item is water quality. So Councilmember Denson, water quality is on the agenda, just flagging that for you. And then Crystal Judson, Family Justice Center Board is meeting next Monday, which is a month earlier than we typically do. But they wanted to meet prior to the annual barbecue that there's a few signs up that will be happening in July. And so we will have that, I'll have an update next week on their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other updates? I will update about the State Association of Counties. There's a notice of special membership meeting that should be coming out here really soon for Wednesday, June 26th. The State Association bylaws are such that there needs to be a call for a meeting at least two weeks. So you should receive it by the 12th, but I suspect you'll receive it earlier. So there'll be a special membership meeting of the State Association on Wednesday, June 26th. It'll be in Yakima, but it'll be, it'll be hybrid. So you'll be able to conveniently participate virtually on June 26th. The purpose of the special membership meeting is to consider bylaw changes. And so the topics of bylaw changes, you should be able to review by at least the 12th of June. Again, I suspect it coming out a little bit earlier than that. Will be largely around the topic of weighted voting. So weighting voting based on population. They're going to say, what's going to be presented to the membership is going to say weighted voting based on dues. Due is largely based on population. So it's weighted voting based on population, some changes to our, to our bylaws about decisions, decision-making in a weighted voting structure. Right now, it's one, one board member, one vote. So Pierce County has as much say as Ponderoy County, God love Ponderoy County. We're, we're many times bigger than Ponderoy County. So right, right now, at all the decision-making tables at our State Association, it's one member, one vote regardless of population. So there'll be a bylaw changes, again, several changes throughout the bylaws in this rubric of weighted voting, but based on population. There'll also be a, a bylaw change, and this is all coming from a, a bylaw committee appointed by the president of the association, which I participated in, several others, a very diverse group of committee members from east and west, rural and urban, making these recommendations to the membership. The, the other big topic change will be around defining partial dues payments in that counties can pay partial dues payments by a date certain and still be a full voting member in the State Association. So that will be, I suspect that will be coming before the membership body. There may be some other ancillary items, but I think the big, the, the big issues are those two items that I just articulated. There'll also be a motion to, I, I would anticipate a motion around the thought of continuing conversation about dues. So there continues to be a discussion that larger counties continue to pay, even based on our population, continue to pay a disproportionate share of the dues at the State Association, and trying to, we'll still always pay more because of our size, but there's an interest by, especially Snohomish County is where this interest is largely coming from. There's a strong interest in having smaller counties pay a little bit more, larger counties pay a little bit less to, to, it's not going to be equal. We're not going after equality here. But a, a, a little bit more buy-in from smaller counties in the base due structure of the State Association so that larger counties aren't paying such a significant amount of the bill to operate the State Association. That, that whole issue about a due structure is not going to be worked out by the June 26th special membership meeting, but expect a motion to empower a bylaws committee to continue that, those discussions, and bring recommendations to the membership at the regular November special membership meeting. Last thing I'll say is because of the State Association bylaws, it's going to sound a little awkward. The, expect a, a call for a special membership meeting, and then at the end of the membership meeting on June 26th, expect a motion to recess the meeting. So the, the meeting will be recessed until November as opposed to adjourn. We can talk more about that offline if you're, if you're curious about the nuances of that. Just wanted folks to know what, what to expect. These bylaw changes so far are coming unanimously recommended so far from this bylaw committee that, again, is a very diverse group of WASAC members from east and west, rural and urban. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions about that report. We're all, we're all, as individuals, we're all voting members at a membership meeting of the State Association. It's not one county, one vote. It's individual elected officials, as a reminder. Okay, and I don't see any other lights about other external boards and commissions. Under Chair's topics, let's just come back to the appointment to make this go as smoothly as possible for at least council consideration. Usually, having more time, we would prepare for how we're going to ask questions and just make it go smoother. But so if, I, I would anticipate, we anticipate the qualified individual, the applicant to be on Zoom again as a reminder. We'll ask them to introduce themselves, ask them to share why they wish to serve. Ms. Long, put the individual's application, written application materials in our email box so you can find the individual's application in our inbox. So please look for that. Ms. Long, if you could have staff print it out for the 3:00 PM meeting so we can have it ready in front of us, please, and easily accessed. And then we'll open it up for questions by council members. If you have, if you think you have a question, you know, we just, we try to, as you know, not have duplicate questions, but we're not going to, I'm not anticipating multiple candidates, so I'm not as worried about that as usual in terms of fairness and organizing ourselves to be efficient and professional. So just, well, I think we'll roll with it this afternoon. Come prepared to ask a question if you have one. You don't have to have a question. Come prepared to have a question if, and just listen to each other so that we don't trip all over each, each other and ask the same question as someone else asks. So that's going to be my recommendation about how we manage our time together, unless anyone else has any other input or suggestions about how to manage that portion of our meeting this afternoon. Councilmember Hitchen?
Just to clarify one question, I'm not anticipating that I'll have multiple questions. I'm just for the body, one question like we usually do.
My, my suggestion would be one question per council member.
Thank you.
Manage our time. Okay, that's what we'll do then. Thank you, everyone. Let's, there's nothing else under Chair's topics. Let's move to other business discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray?
Good afternoon. Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. So I want to discuss with the council three potential changes to the process we have for grant authorizations and applications and collective bargaining agreements. And to just give you an idea, the reason this came up is actually back in April. Usually, these applications for grants, as well as the collective bargaining agreements, have some sense of urgency attached to it. And in April, we had sort of a confluence of, of multiple grant applications as well as a few collective bargaining ordinances. And I was trying to understand myself what the difference was, that we had some that come before Monday's study session to then be acted on to the council the following day, and we had others that were coming via resolution. And I just wanted to educate myself on what was, what's the process and why was there a difference between these things? And so I met with Ms. Long, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Krueger, and Paul Bokey to kind of just get an understanding of it. And what I learned in that process was those that were, those grant applications and authorizations that were coming before the council's resolutions were really driven by the grantor organization. They wanted to see that in the form of a resolution versus others that, I guess, are more, that, that don't seek that at all. And it's really our budget trailer bill that has language that says those applications need to come before the council. Those are the ones that have been showing up on our Monday's study session. And, and so I said, is there then the value, since they were saying, look, there's always this time-sensitive issue? We need this, you know, next week or two weeks from now, is if this was an application for which it is in a plan or in, it's in the budget, did it need to go to committee? Could we treat those, those resolutions, because there's no requirement that anything go to a committee? That is you as the council deciding you want to have that extra look? Is for those that are kind of relatively non-controversial, could we avoid that process of coming to rules or going to CDC and simply have those placed on for final and treat them just like we do the grant authorizations in a Monday's study session? So all of you as a council would still get that information, but we could speed up the process. We could probably at least take a week off, maybe more, with just foregoing the, the committee review. I think it is appropriate, and we did have in that group a proposal, a project that no one had ever heard of. And it seems very appropriate that those go to a committee, that you do an extra look. But if it really is substantively no different than the grant applications that you're reviewing on Monday for the council study session, why go through that additional process? So what we're proposing to you is, and now that we have Ms., you know, Erica Rhett, and I always want to say Johnson, now that we have Hugh Taylor in the position of being able to focus his time on that pre-review, which he's doing right now on legislation, he could be kind of that gatekeeper to say, no, this is one that really needs to go to a committee and have that review, and these are ones that are much more similar to what you see Paul come in every Monday to review. And so we want to propose sort of that system for you so it just won't be presumed, since it's in resolution form, it always goes to a committee. I think that would just sort of speed up the process. But again, these processes are for you. And if that, if, if you want to keep the, the same system, we're fine. It's just that it's always been this management, how to do it that fast, right? And, and this is just an option available to you. So I want to put that before the body. Is that advisable, non-advisable? But it really did for me during that period of time, I was just trying to understand what is the comparable difference between this grant versus these others, and to find out there's none, it really brought to me like, well, why are we doing two different processes? That adds time in an, in an, an issue where they're saying, we have no time.
Questions or comments about maybe just to illustrate the example? So Recreation Conservation Office grants that, and correct me if I'm misspeaking. Recreation Conservation Office grants require a resolution by the county legislative authority. for the county to pursue a Recreation Conservation Office. That, so it's a resolution, a formal resolution, um, is, and you see it how we've seen it for years. Gets placed on our agenda for, at, for consideration like any other resolution, because that's what the RCO requires. And we take it through our decision, our committee processes, Ms. Murray indicates. The only reason we do a resolution is because the Recreation Conservation Office requires it. We could put that, the guts of that resolution as a motion on our consent agenda. Or, or that, that is an option. It could be on the consent agenda, like we give authorization for any other grant request, like Saferidge School or any number of other grant requests that we authorize. We could do it on our consent agenda, or we could brief it like we brief it. And just schedule it uh, as a normal re- resolution for consideration, but without it going to committee. CDC or EIDC or rules, um, and just place it on the agenda. So uh, the, the ones that I'm aware of are RCO grants that require resolutions. And so I just wanted to illustrate this. Is there any, that, I guess the, the question is, does the body want to, our normal practice as you've seen them? Or do you want to do this more expedited process? Is there any strong feelings by any, by any member? Councilor Moreau?
I think uh, in, most of these are somewhat repetitive in nature as far as just the ask goes. To me, anything we can do to expedite them is, is, is fine by me. Yeah, cause some of them end up, we, we are back against, against the wall on some of these requests. And if we don't do anything, we, we miss the cutoff. So if we add more procedure, then that means they have to give us enough time to go through prop, our process and protocol. So um, if there's another way to do it, cause I, you know, very seldom since I've been here, that we've decided not to go for a grant. I think there's only one that I remember. So um, I think pretty much, you know, hey, anytime there's money out there, we're going to go for it. So.
So I'm not hearing objections. So the, again, the example of the Recreation Conservation Office grants that the department might pursue as an, as an example, that required legislative authority approval. We are okay with briefing them at a Monday's study session like we brief any other grant authorization request. And then um, we can schedule it for final action on the, at the appropriate agenda for final action. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Hitchens?
Just, I guess a question, it is a resolution, so does it need to be noticed the week prior? Or can it be same day? Cause we sometimes get grants on Monday's study session for Tuesday's agenda. And since there's a legislative piece, I just want to make sure.
Right. As a resolution, it would need to be um, on the consent for introduction and scheduling a week, at least a week prior.
Okay.
Yeah. So what I would anticipate, it would come in as introduction, we would just set it for final the following week. And then it would appear at Monday's study session the day before. And we would just move forward. So that really becomes a one week period versus potentially a two to three week period?
That's the time savings and the committee hearings stop. So it would come the study session for discussion and briefing, but we would bypass a committee briefing. Vice Chair Campbell?
So in those cases, we get sometimes near the end of a month, they're like, hey, we just found out about this. You've got to move it tomorrow. Um, what do we do in that situation? Where we have to do it in less than a week?
Yeah. If it's a resolution and it truly was an emergency, you have the option to do it as an emergency. It might have to, the language might have to be modified somewhat. But I think that the point is to encourage the department to be a little quicker than that, getting things to the council. It's only a week.
For these Recreation Conservation Office grants, I think the department's quite used to our timeline. And these are such robust grants that they typically build in the necessary time.
We just, we've seen it happen, maybe it hasn't been the RCO, but it's, we've had grants where they're like, it got released, they gave us two weeks to turn it around. We just got it ready.
And those just, those are simple motions. Those aren't record, those aren't resolutions to approve or something.
Understood.
I'm only aware that there, there's a few others that happen potentially with like, uh, the Public Works Board. Every once in a while, like there is some other new grant that they may require that. So it's, it's still going to be, I think, a rarity when you look at the course of our year, but they do send, tend to cluster together and then sort of the anxiousness arises. But if we could handle these within a one week period, we're better than where we were this past, this past April. And we can just rely again, Hugh will be able to look at these and be able to assess if there is a need to go to a committee. I mean, he can make that, um, that judgment call and talk to us. But hope, cause I do think that there will be those, like the one we had where it was a new project, a new assumption that, um, the, that you should slow it down. But if it's just a format issue, um, let's try to, so we'll, we'll do it and we'll see how it works. And if it doesn't work, we, we can always go back. This isn't require any change to your rules. It's really just about how we process them internally. So the other issue, what we wanted to do as well is currently those um, grants come on the Monday's study session agenda. And then after your review, we revise the council's agenda to add them. And what we'd like to do is note them pending that review on the council's agenda that we pub, post and publish the week prior, just because we, one, it makes sure that we have the lists are consistent between the two, as well as I believe the public tends to spend more of their time looking at the council's agenda. So if there is, there is any kind of public um, review, it's more transparent to have that be issued. Now, if there is a grant for which the council decides they are not interested in doing from that Monday's study session, we will amend the agenda to remove it. But I think this just makes it more transparent and um, kind of on the staff side, make sure that we're consistent um, earlier in the process than doing it, essentially we do it um, Monday afternoon. So we're just going to make that change to the um, council's agenda.
Any objection to that change? I think it makes sense.
And then the last thing, and this just kind of came up in our overall conversation about committee review is also collective bargaining agreements. Those likewise come to us with a certain time crunch attached to them. And uh, and this was new information to me, um, is that, you know, the collective bargaining agreements are essentially an up or down vote, you know, by the council. And so we bring them through rules and operations. And I've always viewed the, you know, committee action is for gaining in more, more and better information and for the purposes of amendment. Since you can't amend them, it's really again about information. And the information, is it necessary just for two or for all the members, right? And you also have changed your process a bit, um, proceeding even my um, hiring to get more regular information from Human Resources preceding these agreements. That you're far better briefed now on what is happening with agreements. That doesn't make sense to have them also then go through rules and operations, because that's a minority of members. Is could we likewise note these, um, their ordinances, so they do have to go through our process and can't take place no less than 13 days. But does it need to go through a committee? Could we also then review these at a study session the day preceding it? So you can get the same briefing, but it's to all of you together and um, potentially shave off another week before final action on those. And I would be proposing they go, they're not, they're not going to be placed on consent. They would be placed in section nine, because we do once in a while have people who come in who want to um, speak to them and they should have that opportunity. Um, and we should just generally have that as a practice. But again, just like kind of the grant authorize, authorization, the applications, if there are, if there are material and there, that may happen. More often it happens on working conditions, that there may be something that you do want to have that kind of more in-depth review is having those go through when we kind of note, note that through a committee versus pro forma, always just going to rules, having that short hearing and then, you know, waiting a week and having it come to, to council is could we likewise just sort of move these through? Have your review be at the study session so that we can act on them the next day?
So folks heard that process, um, suggestion change for collective bargaining agreements. Any, any uh, objection to that change in our process and procedure? Councilor Hitchens?
I guess I'm, I'm, I know as the employer what our thoughts are, but have we asked our collective bargaining groups about change? I don't know if they've ever used our process to make public comment before we vote on something. It hasn't really happened. It's been more in the budget time, but.
By the time it gets to us, there's a tentative agreement with the bargaining unit. I don't know. Ms. Long, do you have any feedback?
Well, even if it was on the consent, we still now offer the opportunity for public comment on our final consent items too, so.
Not on scheduling.
We're not suggesting the CBA is beyond consent for final approval. We're just suggesting that the collective bargaining agreements, instead of going to rules, go to study session for briefing and discussion by council. And then get scheduled for final action appropriately thereafter.
Right. Yeah. We haven't really offered opportunity for comment on this schedule.
Okay.
They're usually, I mean, as far as I know, they're, the, the collective bargaining units are anxious to get them through council, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that took an opportunity, but in theory, it should be baked by the time it comes here.
Yeah. In the time I've been here, only twice have, that I've noticed a person testifying and it's been at council. Not at rules and operations. It's really been more the conversation with you and, and human resources. And so again, it's like that conversation, we could just have it a study session that's to all the members then. And, and sort of just expedite that one week.
Yeah, I get, I totally hear your point, Councilor Hitchens. We're not trying to circumvent anyone's uh, ability to give input. The, the general public, members of a bargaining unit. So is it, being, being mindful of that, that there will be a public hearing at final action. And presumably these come before us after there's tentative agreement with the bargaining unit. Councilor Moreau?
There again, um, you know, for, for our vote, it's, it's an up and down vote. We can't change anything, no matter who comes forward and says they don't like the deal. Or they had concerns about it. I mean, you know, they have the opportunity to, to uh, you know, make their concerns known, but understanding that we're not putting false expectations out there that we can actually say, you know, you're right, let's go back and redo this whole thing. So I, I don't want that message to be sent out. So we're an up and down vote and uh, that's all we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. We, um, I definitely agree, uh, and understand the process the way you do. I, I guess the, if, I've been in a number of circumstances over the years where the legislative body chose to continue. For, for whatever reason, it gets on the legislative body's final action agenda and something goes awry behind the scenes. And the legislative authority is asked either by the bargaining unit or the employer or the labor relations team to continue for a few weeks while they rework something. That, so y- yes, our, our, we do not amend, seek collective bargaining agreements. Sometimes things happen behind the scenes where we can continue and those, those actually bargaining at the table do, do more work. So continuance is, is an option and we would still have that option to, to continue if uh, council is convinced that continuing is in the, the best interest. Ms. Murray, anything else?
No. So we'll like, like grants and authorizations, we'll, we'll try it. And if it doesn't seem to work, you know, we can always go back to our prior practice. But this just looked like, you know, one other way to just expedite things. When usually it's the department or the community's asking for it. So, um, so we'll give it a go and check back with you. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Moreau?
Just, thank you, Ms. H. Just one question, Ms. Long. Since this comes to us in an ordinance, if we don't take action on an ordinance, at what point in time does it become policy?
So if you don't take action on the ordinance, um, then it, after a period of two years by your rules, it just dies. So it could continue and you could revive it at any time. You know, if they came back a month later and said, okay, we've resolved the issues, um, let's go, you can reintroduce it and reschedule.
But if we don't take action?
If no action is taken for a period of two years, it just, it's terminated under your rules of procedure.
There isn't like a 90-day action that we have to take or?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions about what Ms. Murray raised in her report? Thank you, Ms. Murray. Uh, Communications Manager and Public Information Officer update, Mr. Dominique?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Uh, for the record, Brian Dominique, Communications Manager. Uh, just a couple of quick updates uh, today. Um, in your packet, there's a Juneteenth proclamation. That's going to head to rules and operations next week. So if you have any changes, go ahead and get with me and I can work with the sponsor to uh, change those, or you can get direct with the sponsor and the sponsor will get with me. Um, and we'll be claiming, claiming that on June 18th, um, at our Tuesday, or at our Tuesday council meeting. And then um, I'm doing a lot of projects with individual council members right now. Normal operations for the council, like county legislator and social media and things like that. So nothing out of the ordinary uh, there. We are doing some things uh, with the budget that I'll be excited to uh, roll out to the council in the next few weeks. So more to come on that. And then finally, um, Jair, who's everyone's voice in the community has come to know and love for our meetings. Uh, he's reaching his one-year anniversary tomorrow with the council. So um, we are happy to have him and. So uh, that is all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Dominique? Mr. Wines, very congratulations on your work anniversary. We're very, very glad to have your service.
Thank you for hanging with us.
Any questions for Mr. Dominique? Thank you. Okay. We're at a, a letter of support for global war on terrorism. The draft letter is in your packet. This is designed to be signed by the chair and the executive. My only note real quick is that uh, because there's two individuals signing, the opening should just say, we are pleased to provide this letter. Ms. Uh, Councilor Herrera, to further introduce your bringing this forward, thank you for doing so.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just unified letter of support uh, for Global War on Terrorism Memorial at the state Capitol. There's already a Korean War one, there's a Vietnam one. This would be um, dedicated to our global war on terrorism veterans, um, which include many places across the world. You know, Iraq, Afghanistan, Africa, everywhere we've been in the last 20 years. Just want to make sure that this is not a forgotten war, uh, from all the uh, Washington residents who sacrificed so much for this thing. And, and this memorial would also be a place of healing for veterans who uh, um, need some closure. And what's unique about this memorial is uh, planned to include folks who um, lost their souls over there, uh, but didn't fall down until 10 or 15 years later. So the plan is to include some of those, those names also. So um, I'm very passionate about this, as everyone possibly know. Uh, I am involved with it at a very high level, um, in some aspects. But that's not the reason why I'm doing this. I think it's the right thing for Pierce County to get behind something like this, that uh, we have a lot of veterans. We have a lot of people who serve. Um, so this would be a healing place for Washington veterans and families.
Thank you for bringing it forward, Councilor Herrera. Is there any questions, comments or objection to us sending the letter to the State Department of Enterprise Services? I don't see any objection. Um, Ms. Murray, if we could just change the opening. And uh, please facilitate. Thank you. The next item is a letter of support to the Recreation Conservation Office, uh, the state agency. This is a request we have. Office, the state agency. This is a request we have from the Nisqually Land Trust and Nisqually Tribe, for a letter of support to a state grant for the Busy Wild Creek Phase Four, to add to the community forest there. We can recall that at, I believe it was Council Member Krueger's last in-district meeting at Camp Arnold in Eatonville, one of the presenters she had was the community forest project from the Nisqually Land Trust and Nisqually River Council. And so this is for an application, a state grant for Phase Four, to the same general area to add to the community forest initiative there. So this is, again, upon the request of, of the Nisqually Indian Tribe. Questions or comments about the letter? Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm not 100% educated on this. I just wanted to make sure that, so the Nisqually Indian Tribe is applying for it, but it's going into the Nisqually Community Forest. Is that a different program, or is the land going to be under the Nisqually Tribe? I guess that's the question.
I'm not exactly sure. Councilmember Krueger, are you certain about who the, my understanding is the community forest is its own corporate entity, and the Nisqually Tribe is intimately involved. I don't know, you know, all the nuances of, of how, but they're intimately involved in management and governance and support. But the, the community forest is a, a corporate entity in, in and of itself. Mr. Krueger, do you have anything to add here?
It's, it's my understanding that the community forest is made up of properties with several landowners involved. And so in, in this particular case, it's 1,300 acres that would be added to lands that adjoining, that are adjoining tribal land that was purchased several years ago. The tribe's purchased 1,240 acres in 2021, and this property would be immediately adjacent to that, which is then added up to other properties that have been acquired with conservation futures, all part of the Nisqually Community Land Trust, is, is my understanding. And if I'm misstating, Councilwoman, please correct me.
In this application, Mr. Krueger, is the Nisqually Tribe going to be the underlying landowner? Or do, do you have clarity on that?
It indicates that the land would be, that this, this fund would acquire 1,381 acres of timberland adjoining the tribal acquisition in 2021. And so it sounds to me like it's all tribal ownership of, of these phases of the larger project.
Commissioner Krueger?
Thank, thank you, Chair. The way I've read it is, the community forest is like a subdivision of the land trust, and they partner with the tribe. So this is putting the community forest around the 5,100 acres, and to, and then they work in conjunction. But that, the community forest, there is, I believe, they're working with more public access in trying to. So there is use of the land. It's just kind of slow-going.
I have Councilmember Krueger's same understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you. Other feedback on the letter? Commissioner Krueger?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I, there is in the packet. I had revised it a little bit. I had, you know, Mr. Trout is, is director, and I just took out some of the hyperbole's to make it a little more, you know, to the point. And I'm asking for that, the, the other letter that is for Director Trout be substituted than, from the one that you had have signed. And Joe Kane, who is the, the project manager, I want to say, or who has brought this forth, has said that the version that I am asking for looks great. So I would appreciate that consideration.
Any objections to accepting the additions, the edits made to the letter? Thank you. Ms. Murray, if you could prepare the letter with the chair's signature for Director Trout, that would be good second version, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Krueger, any, any input on that? Good. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business by council this afternoon, Commissioner Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm glad today's council meeting is going to be short, because tomorrow evenings might be a little bit longer. Although, although I promise, we've got a plan. We're going to keep it as tight as possible. John will be emailing all of you at some point today. We will have dinner available at 5:00 at the Environmental Learning Center. So Park at the Zoo, you just walk down towards the zoo, and then it's on your left. You'll see some A-boards. You're welcome to be there anytime, you know, after 5:00. One thing that, that you can do to help us keep the, the meeting going smoothly and, and quickly, is, I guess I identified kind of two, two portions of the agenda. One is our introductions, you know, obviously, say whatever, whatever you wish, but if we can be brief, I think that would be great, describing, you know, where, where our districts are. I would like to ask everyone to tell us what your favorite tree is. So I'm just giving you a little forewarning. If you can think of your favorite kind of tree, I thought that would be fun. And then we do have a lot of presentations. If there's a burning question, you know, of course, you're all, all welcome to ask questions, but it would probably be best if you've got questions to follow up with speakers afterwards. And I'm happy to share all of their contact information, just because we do have a lot of speakers. And I didn't really add in time for a ton of questions.
At study session yesterday, there was a burning desire by Councilmember Morell that we all come up with five questions each, per subsection.
Per presentation.
I'll have six.
Excellent. Well, I, I will announce that.
For the record, I wanted to hold it at three.
You, Councilmember Campbell.
I lost. We're going to be at five.
So I was going to make a comment at the beginning of the meeting to that effect, and also let the presenters know not to be offended if they didn't get questions that we're trying to move through, so we can, you know, respect everyone's time. So putting that out there. And then also, would anyone have any objection if I ask one of the students of the Science and Math Institute to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and read the land acknowledgement? Are there any objections to that? Okay. And then the other thing I'll just give you a heads up on, which I think we discussed, is at the beginning of the meeting, when we approve the agenda, I'm going to ask to move proclamations, recognitions, and awards to the end, so that we can do our recognition of the word game winner. So heads up. Hopefully, no one has any objections to that. Otherwise, that will really mess things up. And thank you, Councilmember Campbell, for being so supportive at the rules meeting the other day. I appreciated, appreciated that. I think that's all. Any questions? It's going to go great.
I'm sure it will be. It's a beautiful setting. And the rainstorm will be done, and windstorm will be done by, by tomorrow evening.
Good.
Vice Chair Campbell?
I have five questions. No.
Get them all out now.
Your microphone, I think, popped when you were saying it. Did you say the meeting will be a zoo or at the zoo?
Park at the zoo. Park at the zoo parking lot. It's not at the zoo, sorry. Park at the zoo, and then as you're heading towards the zoo, the Environmental Learning Center is right to your left. It's very, very easy. And we will have A-boards out there, and maybe even some students to direct.
All right. Thank you.
Any, anything else, Commissioner Denson?
No, thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you. We look forward to tomorrow evening. Is there any other business by other members? Ms. Murray or Ms. Long, any other business for council? With no other business before the Pierce County Council and Tuesday study session, we are adjourned.